We start with Pledge of Allegiance this morning. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good morning, happy Wednesday. Go ahead and start with asking for approval of the agenda presented.
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
No, sorry.
I have a motion, a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Next, I can ask for approval of the minutes dated November 30th, 2022.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
I have a motion, a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Next item I have is approval of claims for payment dated December 14th, 2022.
Make a motion to approve.
Oh, sorry.
I have a motion, a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Clarissa, you are up.
Yeah, thank you, thank you so much for the time to share today. I'm having a bit of a nostalgic moment. I think the last Harding County Board of Supervisors meeting I attended, Mr. Johnson and Mr. Bear, and I apologize, I can't think of the other supervisor we're working with on our project, so really I appreciate the time. I'm Clarissa Thompson, I'm the executive director of Mid-Auver Community Action, and I just wanted to spend some time today re-grouping and sharing about the work that we do in Harding County to support family. Mid-Auver Community Action was established in 1865 as part of President Johnson's War on Poverty, the Economic Opportunity Act. Across the country, there are a thousand community action agencies, but we don't call state community action or any. And in Iowa, there are sixteen of us serving children, families, and communities, all locally focused on helping people change their lives. Poverty is a very deep and complex issue that most likely will affect over one half of Americans at some point in their adult life. MICA is helping families affected by the conditions of poverty meet their needs, build on their strengths, and achieve their goals. We care about the entire community in our values of compassion, advocacy, resiliency, equity, and service that are worked every day. Our service area covers the counties of Harding, Marshall, Howchy, Story, and Tamaa, and our last fiscal year, we served over eighteen thousand individuals. And from the period of October 1st, 2021 to September 30th, 22, in Harding County, we served two thousand three hundred and fifty-eight individuals, or fifteen percent of the Harding County population, and around a thousand households. The most recent, a little bit older since this data, shares that Harding County's poverty rate is seven point nine percent, or twelve hundred and ninety-four individuals. Keep in mind, this number uses the federal poverty measure of a hundred percent for this data point, and what I can tell you is for a family of four, they would earn less than twenty-seven thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars per year, or about thirteen dollars and thirty-four cents each hour if you counted a pop. Data shows that in Harding County, a household with two adults and two young children would require an annual income of fifty-nine thousand, five hundred and forty-three dollars to meet their basic needs. That means that both adults must earn at least fourteen dollars and seventy-seven cents an hour, or a total of twenty-nine dollars and fifty-four, so if you know someone who earned ten, you get to that twenty-nine dollars. But across Iowa, one in seven working households can't consistently meet their basic needs. So you may ask, what is the basic needs budget? I can hand out to share later. And a basic needs budget covers what it takes to survive rather than bribe, so your rent, your utilities, healthcare, childcare, clothing, household expenses, and transportation, that's it. No budget for school, field trips, emergencies, or savings, or anything else that we may classify as basic needs. But what does MICA do? Well, we work to bridge those gaps between what households earn and those needs vary by community and depend on each family and their individual education. Our work in the spaces of health, early childhood education, family development, and housing are pillars to helping support in all capacities towards self-sufficiency. However, our work also addresses systemic issues to bring awareness, understanding, and change. So most of our programs at MICA are required for families to be, meet, and eligibility based on income and poverty thresholds. So in order to provide support to those in Harding County who work in MICA, they must hold MICA for these programs. And so an example I can share is for our energy assistance program, that poverty level is a little bit higher than that one I shared earlier, and it goes up to a hundred and seventy-five percent of poverty. See, this was probably so complex, lots of different things to know and do. But for a family of four at that level, that would equate to forty-eight thousand, and then the sixty-three dollars would be exact. So when I talked earlier about a hundred percent of poverty for a family of four, that's twenty-seven, seven hundred and fifty, so awaiting how to bridge those gaps. The programs and services we provide in Harding County include energy assistance, water assistance, emergency food, child internal health, WIC, which is a nutrition program including breastfeeding and formula support, which is very critical this year with the formula shortage, energy efficiency, early childhood development, childcare, family development, and most importantly, connecting families to community resources. So to give you a little snapshot, in our energy assistance program, we serve six hundred and thirty-six families, water assistance, a hundred and thirty-one. We provided three hundred and sixty-nine households over twelve hundred food boxes, early childhoods, our childcare, high-quality school readiness program, and serve thirty-one children and their families. And our WIC program, that nutrition program, serves two hundred and forty-two individuals. We have ten full-time staff working in Harding County, we have an office and medical halls, and we have additional staff that comes to the community to provide services as needed. And last year, Harding County residents and providers and organizations provided us over thirty thousand dollars of cash and food donations, which are so critical in helping us to address local needs in our work. Some of the things besides our local work right now that we're seeing that our families that we're serving are telling us is really issues around food insecurity. We have seen a thirty-one percent increase at our families' meetings for a food pantry since this and last year. And we're also seeing folks needing to use a food pantry services more than once a month. However, many churches, clubs, schools, and organizations have been great in supporting that need and helping us make sure we have food to meet this demand. And another immediate need that our staff are talking about is hearing from families is related to housing and housing assistance, and that really isn't any different than any of our other counties as well. We have a great partnership with the city of Marshalltown, who has provided helpful support to families that are approved when they find that housing that they can provide assistance to. I know the numbers and data tells a story, but I just want to leave with a couple of things. I do want to say a huge thank you to the Harding County Board of Supervisors for your ongoing support, and also membership on our board of directors, board of directors and full disclosure, my name is a board member, so we appreciate their support. And lastly, I'd like to leave you with a success story, and this is an email that was shared from a family we served last year to our family belt by Lord Laurie Spat. And these states, when I moved back to this area a few years ago, I was fleeing a dangerous whole life. So when I came here, I had to start from absolutely nothing. The Iowa Falls office was so helpful in many ways, the food box, rent, and utility assistance, but that's just the beginning. I found myself in possession of a home that I had to clean out, and when I found out there was no furnace in it, it was just this shell in the basement. The office assisted me with encouraging positivity that I really needed at that time. Everyone is always smiling and understanding. Some of those days were very bad for me, and I worked and worked on the house, and I got sicker and sicker. So they always lived in my spirits when I went there. Almost everything I needed was available to me. If they did not help me with where, which was a rare occasion, they always knew where to send me or to refer me. I'm not sure what I would do if I had not had the assistance, any encouragement, or glory in our team, and we're so grateful. So all that I've told today, I can talk a lot about the work that we do, but this is a quick overview, and I'm happy to answer any questions or come back and share at another time. So thank you again for supporting the work at MICA and supporting your community.
Thank you, Clarissa. Thank you.
All right, the next item, I'm jollying, you have to bear with me, we're gonna move a couple of things around. Next item, I'm going to ask engineer Rawls, if you'll meet yourself. Engineer Rawls out of town, a professional engineer, and so I'd like move to items, a consideration to approve the contract for bridge replacement project, BROS-swapped-SEAL-42-110-FE-42, T Avenue over Honey Creek. Taylor, you want to give a quick overview?
Sure, this is a gravel road bridge, it's currently a timber structure, it's on T Avenue over Honey Creek, so it's, you know, south of D-65, west of Union, you know, just about right before you, about a mile north of the county line, so. It's a farm-to-market gravel road, so it's a pretty important one, and we wish we could do more gravel road bridges, but this is one we would like to prioritize.
Okay, you want to explain in front of me, and I'll explain for you, Taylor. It was, the bidding was flat on November 15th, and we received four bids from, four contractors, anywhere from six hundred and forty-nine thousand, seven hundred and six dollars and seventy cents to eight hundred and three thousand, six hundred and thirty-four dollars and fifty cents, with Peterson Contracting from Rhinebeck being the low bidder at six hundred and forty-nine thousand, seven hundred and six dollars and seventy cents. Are you suggesting to approve the bid with Peterson Contracting?
Yes, yes, I am.
All right. Thank you, Taylor.
You bet.
I'll make that motion to approve.
I'll second it.
I have a motion, a second, any discussion? Hearing none?
Quite a bit of difference between the next highs and lows.
Nearly ninety thousand dollars between the lowest and the second lowest. All right. If there's no more discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Anything else to report before I let you get back to your conference, Taylor?
Just a lot of muddy roads right now, that was not the kind of rain in December that we were expecting, but just gonna have to deal with it, there's not much we can do.
All right, thank you, Taylor. All right, next item. Mark Bushcamp from Iowa Falls Area Development Corporation is here for an update.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So we did just kind of, we're working on the last month or so. We had a second visit to a building in Eldora by an estate business that's looking to expand operations in this area. So discussions are ongoing between the building owner and business to see if they can come to some type of agree upon either lease price or possible purchase price. I reached out a second time to a business that's out of state, all the buildings in Eldora looking to expand, and I have not, not received response from them, so we'll just keep plugging away. We did host a community visit and site visit by a company and its international partner that's looking to establish a plant in this area. I think the visit went well, and the company appeared very interested in pursuing a partnership and developing a plant here. We showed them four sites in Iowa Falls, and then I showed them a building and a property here in Eldora. So I followed up with emails back to them, returned home. They seemed still very excited for moving forward. This is a very initial outreach by this company, so there's a long way to go before anything happens, or there's been things that go wrong, but it was very encouraging. I have one meeting, the Project Harist, which is a project we've been working on for well over a year and a half. But we had one business, that's Mr. October's business. Honestly, I think things are slipping there. I did learn that their construction on their first plant that they're doing has been pushed back by six months, so that's going to obviously end that in the atmosphere down the road. And then I attended the Iowa Area Development Group's Venture Award presentation in the morning to CNI. CNI is a new company that sold the spec building to last December, a year ago. And so CNI again expresses their appreciation for our work with them, how things are going, so very urgent. The Economic Engineering Strategy Plan sessions that were held here in this building on the 8th, 9th, and 10th of November were well attended. We had averaged, I think, nearly eighty people each day, and probably in total, nearly a hundred people attended, some couldn't attend every day. So it went very well. The Starey City has an initial draft and I expect to discuss that tomorrow, and we'll be without attend next week. Another project that I've worked on for a year, All Right's Love in Iowa Falls, which is, they're in the former Camp David building, they have an Airbnb and a reception conference center there. They've been looking, we helped them apply for a federal CVG facade grant. That's turned into a nightmare with federal regulations, with data spending wages, with a very short timeline, we ended up not getting any bids on it. We've been pursuing through the state to get an extension of, of the completion date. That's just what they're telling us what they're doing. So I had a conversation two weeks ago with Ed Durham about it. She's come back with an option to just pass on the federal grant, and she'll provide a catalyst grant. We'll have to come up with some additional money, and I'll need to, I'll need to work on that, but I think we're gonna pursue that because we can see that project actually won't hold, or because what the Fed says is going to roll very fast. Then I'm working with Iowa State Center for Industrial Research and Services and Land Energy to do a lunch and work or manufacturing and industrial businesses on what services service to provide. So we're looking at something probably January or even February to do there. Also working with Tim Boman on just kind of sorting through the economic engineering meetings and what economic development might look like. So we're just had an additional discussion last week and trying to work through that. And then if you could bring that up, I, we're also looking at construction of spec in Iowa Falls, and we're meeting today to determine the financing construction. And then yeah, bring that up. Been working with a media company that I became familiar with, developed a two-minute, four-minute video on shopping mobile in Iowa Falls. So this is a shorter two videos, and then we're also gonna produce another video, which is gonna be about a minute, which we're pushing this out on social media on our website. We'll do some Google ads too, and we're gonna push this out, so through the holiday season. Business owners look pretty slow in January, February, so we're continuing to, through that. That's what I've been working on, there's any questions?
It sounds like a lot of iron's in the fire. Bring something new to our communities.
Yeah, we're excited about some of the opportunities. Don't take on the blue issue for some people.
I appreciate the way you and Deb work together.
She's fun work, so it's gonna be a, I agree.
Thank you. All right, the next change. Jake, I'm gonna move you up to the top of the agenda there.
Well, I guess we'll start it off, I'm here to assist, but it's good to, it's good to see you guys, and thank you for having us.
Yes.
I'm Eric Gammery, wanted to start off by thanking the board for letting us come in and give you guys an update today on the Summit Carbon Solutions project. With me, I have Bill Sullivan, he's a relationship manager that's working for the counties for non-carbon permitting, working on Brannish districts as well as building projects and capture facilities. And I think you all know Jake Texner, our vice president at this Summit Carbon Solutions. So I wanted to start off today, just going over what is the project. The Summit Carbon Solutions project is going to go around to thirty-two ethanol plants through the five-state region and pick up their CO2 emissions, and then pipe that CO2 to Northern Dakota, where it will be permanently sequestered underground. The reason Northern Dakota was chosen was based on the geographic makeup up there. They have a capstone and below it, a very porous space, which when CO2 is injected, it can crystallize and be permanently stored there. So that is the project itself, and one of our plants is high landfill processors that is here in Harding County. As far as the drivers of the project, the big reason for the drivers of the project is the ethanol, keeping ethanol viable. What do I mean by that? Certain states in the US have adopted what's called Low Carbon Fuel laws in their states. In Canada, there's also province of Canada, that's that. In addition to those, there's over a dozen states in the US, as well as all provinces of Canada, that have any legislation that would put them into a low carbon fuel. Now, what that means is most ethanol plants right now are operating with carbon intensity scores somewhere in the mid. And in order to sell into these markets, they have to get that carbon score down into the source. And this project allows them to do that. On average, these ethanol plants expect to go down about thirty points with their carbon intensity scores by hooking up to the pipeline of the elements permanent sequester of that carbon. Canada being our number one importer of US ethanol. Again, this is a big deal for ethanol, and it's a big deal for farmers. We talk about keeping ethanol viable, keeping the plant process high, keeping property up and stuff. So those are the real kind of financial drivers of the project, and really the benefits for the community here. Another benefit to the community of the project is we have an account for our merchant young. Basically, take a look at the project and give us a estimated tax bill, not only for the project, but for each state, each county. The estimated increase in taxes that we would pay in Marin County will be two point one, seven million dollars annually. So again, a big uptick in revenue or down. The next thing I kind of want to go into is just to give you some updates on the project. As of right now, we have an eight-minute dance line running through Harding County. We have just over thirty-five miles of line. As far as the land acquisition updates for you, in the state right now, we are just over fifty-eight percent and have paid out over a hundred and six million dollars to landowners for voluntary investments in the state of Iowa's a day. In accounting, we are at almost forty percent, which is a huge increase since the last time we were here. We were here back in May, we were at thirteen percent. So again, lots of movement on the land acquisition front. As far as our, our schedule, we are still expecting a decision around June twenty-three from the Iowa Utilities Board. And given that decision, we would like to start construction in August, toward the end of the summer in 2023. Want to go into a couple of things as far as investors that we have on the project. Summit Ag, John Deere, Continental Resources. Again, this is a, a company that's founded in agriculture, it's founded in farming, and that goes into some of the commitments as well, what they bake to landowners and they bake to clear. For example, I've never worked on a project before that has warranty drain tile for a lot, and that's what Summit Carbon Solutions is doing for the landowners. Ten years later, if there's an issue with that drain tile that's crossed, Summit Carbon Solutions will come back and take care of that. Other commitments that they've, they've done, you go above me on FEMSA, who is the regulator at the federal level, for hazardous material pipelines, well as this pipeline, mandates that ten percent of wells be x-rayed during pipeline construction. Summit has committed to x-ray a hundred percent of those wells. There is, there is a requirement of the FEMSA that has three-foot depth of cover for a pipeline. Summit Carbon Solutions is committed to a four-foot at minimum depth of cover. Some other kind of safety things to look at will be a block valve, at least twenty miles at maximum. And what that block valve does is if there's any change in temperature, if there's any change in pressure, those block valves automatically shut the pipeline off, shutting that part of the pipeline down, then isolating that. And again, twenty miles is the maximum. We put those closer together, and we get into more high-traffic areas, if we have water rodding that we're crossing, things of that nature. So those are the main kind of updates that I wanted to give the board today, and just wanted to turn this over to you unless you ask any questions you may have.
I just wanted to give one quick update, we've had some recent acquisitions, and so statewide, we're actually now over sixty percent, so I just want to make sure you guys know that.
I appreciate the information, I think that's some newer information that I, that I hadn't heard before, and so I appreciate that.
I would just add a couple of things, we, you know, landowners could be excited, so one of the things, we're sixty percent statewide, we're just shy of forty percent here in Harding County. These are, you know, you don't just knock on someone's farm door and say, hey, you know, scientists, right? It takes weeks, months of negotiations, routing on people's property, things that he mentioned, you know, they might want, they might have drain tile at a certain depth, and they need this to come lower indemnity, there's all sorts of things that that we work around, so that just takes time. We, you know, I think the important part is we continue to be on schedule, on time. As he mentioned, we won't begin construction in hard use of September next year. So I know one of the things we really like to work on in Harding County is opening up communication with regards to some of the, I think it's permits and type of those things that we need at the local level, and we need to get moving on those. We're a little bit behind in Harding County compared to other surrounding counties, I don't really say just states, so I don't know if you want to question that.
Yeah.
Um, so one of the things, first of all, uh, as of this week, our Summit Carbon and our, uh, Turkey Non-Environmental Permanency has the road crossing permit submission packet, uh, for ready for Harton County. And previously, I've been starting to basically funnel everything through Darryl. So if you'd like me to continue to do that, I'd be more than happy to, you know, Darryl. I know Darryl will tell us at the, uh, engineers' conference, which I'm at a doubt in Saturday, but I would, the county, like me to submit the road crossing permit, so we have to.
Yeah, continue to follow through Darryl and then show it to Jessica and, uh, and get the other drainage and stuff.
And then the next thing, again, with respect, uh, we've been having meetings with county drainage, uh, and trustees, which frequently are worst support supervisors across the state of Iowa. And we've had a lot of productive meetings so far. We got a lot of information. And we need to do that as well with Harton County. So I would, uh, ask for the board's instruction as to how to do that set up as well.
How would you like to proceed with that, Lance Fernane? We're with Darryl.
So do we agree, Darryl?
Yeah. So yeah, we use Darryl for, uh, initial council, but then Mike Richards and then, uh, Lee Gallant, our drainage engineer. Uh, it, the collaboration between all the individuals will be key there, so.
I would prefer that we could be able to do that in person.
Yeah.
Have you ever sit down, basically workshop and so forth and get everything just going away and, uh, if we did be able, if we could get that on the post of January, everybody sincerely appreciates it and that. You know, we'll try to push that past obviously the holidays, but that would be really very helpful. And then the third thing is we've also got, of course, a capture facility located within Harton County. So there are building permits that we need to get moving on. Um, one of our, uh, facilities, capture engineers, a gentleman named John Lussi, of course, with Derek, I believe, in term here. We're some behalf of some of our, for the building permits. I would like to be able to get something set up as well to where we can have the building permit discussion. Uh, we've got a whole host of questions. Um, I've been bombarding Darryl with these things for a while now, but we kind of need to, right, again, with respect, we really need to, of us, are having some dialogue with those. So again, I'd ask for the board's instruction as to I need to get a meeting set up.
Yeah, Darryl and Jessica. And then if it would require any planning and zoning or any of those items, Jessica Sherman will, you know, get those things set up. Uh, I believe January third, planning and zoning has their next meeting, so, you know, but, uh, while you're in town, I would get ahold of Jessica. She's out of the engineers' office now. And, uh, just get that schedule and, and any documentation for building permits and stuff that you feel required or should let me know what's.
Sure. And, and that, and that, 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 really, it does happen at the office, right?
Right.
It's a focus of, I call it, bold, right?
Right.
So you're there and, um, yeah, we just really want to continue to have those good communications. I, I want to bring a little context, that sixty percent number, but probably, I mean, you, when you say oh, sixty percent, I mean, you got forty percent to go, right? But a little context on that, that's nine hundred and ninety-four Iowa landowners that are signing with us. So hopefully by Friday, we're, uh, hit that thousand mark, we have a little pizza party or something. And then, um, in mileage marks, uh, we've, we've secured four hundred and thirteen miles out of six eighty-five in the state. So, uh, I'd like to bring it that way too. So a thousand landowners, uh, four hundred and thirteen miles. The, the key part I also want to reiterate on is statewide, we distributed a hundred and eleven million dollars now to farmers. Hundred and eleven million, and that's not promised, that's actually paid out. And that's all risk upon the company. So I, I V or North Dakota or South Dakota didn't say, hey, you know, we're denying your project. And there's not a clause in that contract insisting I need a hundred million back. In Harton County alone, we distributed three point five million, uh, to Iowa farmers, uh, for two part of the term. And then, um, I think Derek mentioned it, but we've learned a lot of this last year of what really matters. And obviously you guys know Summit Ag is headquartered in the county, uh, we're Summit Carbon, but we're closely with those folks. One of the things that we, we heard from, from farmers right away when we started paying acquisition last fall, or I'd say beginning of the year really, was we initially had a three-year, three-year drain tile repair in our, in our initial contract or easement with farmers. And farmers were saying, hey, that's just not gonna work. You know, we might even have a drop in a couple of years. You know, we might not see the problems before five, six, seven years. So we, we, that's just an example of something where we changed the rule or changed the easements to make sure folks know that, um, you know, it's now warranty under our company for the life of the project. I could miss about twenty of those, you know, you're, you're missing sale on this, listen to them all. But I just want to make sure you know that, you know, uh, we are, uh, we are negotiating. If we negotiate, our goal is one hundred percent voluntary easements with all landowners. Um, and, uh, actually, we're very pleased with the progress that we're making and, um, we hope to have our hearing with Iowa Utility will be asked in March. Our hope is we'll be able to hear it around seventy, seventy-five percent of the state signed up. And we said about five dollars a week on average, uh, you know, um, our business, she comes down, banking, they got farmers getting a down for winter, but it's generally about five.
I do have a question. So when you say there's a lifetime warranty on tile repairs, is that private tile and like district-owned tile? I mean, is that farmers?
All of those, I know that's in that even with the, in the private landowner, I'm guessing that's a policy rollover, but that, that's what we're setting up those drainage meetings is that's the kind of thing we want to work through. There's different counties, just like landowners, are gonna have different concerns. And so we just want to make sure that we test the laws, that agreement, to make sure that we take into account the concerns of that county and district.
We know everyone has, first of all, your name, your name is, you know, that's important and stuff.
Right, right.
And I see, I think, you know, your neighborhood in counties, like some people, they've all expressed, uh, handoffs, right?
Right.
I mean, I think you guys are aware, we're one of three projects in the state currently, there's an NAB project, there's Wolf, I think that's gonna be, but.
NAB data.
Well, one of the rideabout MBS that I would point out, and this is on the handouts, and there's a number for, for David Lengrel there as well. Uh, Summit is looking for ways to invest in the community, not just financially, but at time as well. Uh, we've done things like free cleanups, uh, we've done United Way, we've done fairs, livestock auctions, anyway, that somebody can come in and do benefit to the community. We're looking for those opportunities. So if you have any of those, uh, please email or call Kenny Lengrel. Please, numbers on your head up.
All right, thank you, gentlemen.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you for having us. We, we appreciate your time. We know how busy you work.
All right.
Of course.
Thank you.
Lee, you have anything for them before?
They don't, okay.
They're all a little meat, so I'm not.
Okay. Sounds good. Thank you, Lee. All right, next thing I have is consideration of approval on utility permit UT dash twenty-two dash zero two five for Northern Natural Gas.
Make a motion to approve.
I have a motion of second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Next item would be the consideration to disallow family farm credit application. This is for Hagland Delta, uh, provided by the county assessments office. I have a motion of second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Next item, I would ask for consideration to approve Deb Crosser to the Harton County Endowment Foundation Board.
I will make the motion to approve the appointment.
I'll second.
I have a motion of second, any discussion?
Congratulations, you know.
Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Next item I have is approve the semi-annual report from the Harton County Treasurer, Michelle Eichmeyer.
I can make a motion to approve.
I'll say it.
I have a motion of second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Next item I have is consideration to approve the monthly report for Sheriff McDaniel's at the Harton County Sheriff's Office for the month of November.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
I have a motion of second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Next item I have is consideration to approve Recorder Cadner's monthly report for the month of November.
Motion to approve.
I'll say it.
I have a motion of second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Next item I have is consideration to receive Honor of Peter's monthly report for the month of November.
I'd like to move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion of second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Next I have a trio of change status for the Harton County Sheriff's Office. This would be Sarah Hawkinson, Hired Correctional Officer, effective December seventh, twenty twenty-two, part, part time and twenty thirty-five an hour.
I'm making motion to approve.
I'll say it.
I have a motion of second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. The next would be, uh, hiring Beyonce Cushionberry, the correctional officer, rate of twenty thirty-five an hour effective December nineteenth.
Make that motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion of second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Final one, uh, Julia.
Yes.
Okay. Uh, the next would be, I believe it's the hiring of Emma Inks, because she's not current on our roster, correct her? It is to be a hiring. Correction here, Emma Inks is a part-time communications officer, uh, at a rate of twenty twenty-two an hour effective December sixth, twenty twenty-two.
Motion to approve.
No, sorry.
I have a motion of second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 I think you have that fourth one.
Yeah, I don't have this.
You guys' spots, and then we'll pick that up.
Let me, was it in our packet too? All right, I'm gonna, I'll, we'll get it, we'll recess and readdress that, okay? All right, any other business? Michelle? Justin, thanks for coming over today. Justin Jensen from Senator Earth's Office. Anything that they have, give us anything exciting.
Nothing. I just want to thank everybody. I, like I said, I'm the Senator's Office, uh, covering Harton County, so any federal issues, I heard a couple of different red flags, so happy to assist with a candidate, I promise, I think that's federal government, but it's appreciated being with you, so.
Thanks for coming over, Justin. Okay, Lee, you're usually not a super bright, isn't he? So any other business?
I don't know.
All right. Michael? Deb?
Don't give it low.
Okay. All right. Yeah. Lance, other business?
No.
Renee?
Neither.
Okay, I don't have any other business. I'm gonna go ahead and ask to recess so we can take care of that final change of status.
Motion to recess.
I'll say it.
Okay, I have a motion of second, any discussion?
Um, I'm gonna do that after drainage?
Yeah.
Okay, after the drainage.
Yes. Michelle?
Ten o'clock, yeah.
Okay.
I don't want to go last.
Okay. All those in favor of recessing, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. We're recessed.